Mute your phone. Thanks, everyone. That's great. All right, it's six thirty. Let's do this. Just want to change my layout. One second. This public meeting is called to order at six thirty P. M. On Monday, January ninth, two thousand twenty-two. This meeting is being held via Webex as per New York City's Emergency Declaration Number Three Three Hundred and Three, allowing virtual access to public meetings under the New York State Open Meeting Law, which allows New Yorkers to virtually participate in local government meetings during the COVID nineteen pandemic. The purpose of this hearing is to hear public testimony with respect to an application by the Department of Small Business Services, S. B. S., pursuant to Section Twenty-five, four zero five A of Chapter Four, Title Twenty-five of the New York City Administrative Code, to expand and amend the Flatbush Avenue Business Improvement District bid in the Brooklyn Community Districts nine and fourteen. Community, I'm sorry, Brooklyn Community Districts nine and fourteen. The proposed extension of Flatbush Business Improvement District includes properties along the Flatbush Avenue from the north side of Cortelia Road to the south side of Parkside Avenue, Church Avenue from the east side of Coney Island Avenue to the west side of Flatbush Avenue. The bid services will include sanitation, public safety, marketing and promotions, economic development, administration and advocacy, and additional services as permitted by law. Presenting the proposal this evening is Lauren Elvers Collins, Executive Director of the Church Avenue Bid and the Flatbush Avenue Bid. Ms. Elvis Collins will present the proposal, then we will take questions from C. D. Fourteen Board Members. Following that, we will hear public testimony. Members of the public were asked to register for time to testify by emailing the Board Office. Do we have any pre-registered speakers, District Manager Campbell?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. We have no pre-registered speakers. And just to reiterate the rule, each speaker would be permitted to speak for up to three minutes and may not receive additional time from another speaker. And we'll move on to hearing the presentation from the Executive Director. Go ahead, Ms. Elvers Collins.
Thank you, thank you, Joanne and Sean, and to the board. Let me just pull open my presentation. Also want to mention that Leslie Palascas, who is with S. B. S. with Small Business Services, who has really been shepherding us through this process, is also on the call. And I think our two new bid staff people may be on there somewhere, but I believe they're probably watching on YouTube, so. Give me a second.
Okay, does that, can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yep.
Great. Okay, so, whoops.
Yes, so thank you again. This is a hearing on the proposed merger of the Flatbush Avenue Bid and Church Avenue Bid. Technically, it is an expansion probably of the Flatbush Avenue Bid, which is more on the S. B. S. side. But we are presenting it as a merger because as for practical reasons and for what it's going to look like on the ground and to the members, that's really how it's going to, that's what it's going to look like. So first, just about the two bids, the Church Avenue Bid and the Flatbush Avenue Bid. We cover roughly one and a half miles, a little bit more of commercial properties on the areas that Joanne just mentioned. We represented combined four hundred fifty businesses, two hundred eighty-two properties, spread over four hundred and seventy-seven storefronts. And currently, we share offices, staff and much of our programming. So the the programming that was mentioned, supplemental sanitation, events, business development, streetscape improvement, COVID services, of course, over the last few years, and one-on-one assistance to everything from helping members get grants to advocating for improvements for Flatbush's commercial and residential community. There are seventy-six bids in New York City, and each bid has a set geographic area. We are funded through an assessment that is an assessment that is levied on the properties. So the Church Avenue Bid's annual amount is two hundred and three thousand dollars, and Flatbush Avenue Bid is three hundred and eighty-six. For our proposal work, we're suggesting just combining the two. So sometimes bids go for increases, which we did about five years ago, but we're not asking for that now. We also have additional funding that we get from sponsorships and events and some marketing initiatives. The bids are overseen by Boards of Directors, which are comprised mostly of Flatbush and Church Avenue property owners, as well as a few business owners, and then the work is carried out by by the staff, which is me. Currently, there are four of us on staff. We also include representatives appointed by Mayor Adams, the Controller, the Borough President and the City Councilmember. So just a quick overview of what we do, since people don't always know, although I think the Board does, but we do community events, uh, street fairs, back-to-school events, Thanksgiving luncheon, meet Santa, a Flatbush Community Celebration at Kings Theater, food distribution, which we actually, which Florencia is actually the person who organized along with the Precinct Council. A lot of sanitation and beautification, so supplemental sanitation and graffiti removal. We recently installed a city bin, which is this this thing right here, which is a way to try to get garbage bags off the street and reduce the rats in the neighborhood. Uh, holiday windows, we did daffodil bulb planting and a lot more sanitation, which will be coming up in two thousand twenty-three. For public safety, we represent all the South Brooklyn bids on the Mayor's Task Force, which deals with quality of life, and also co-chair the Bid Association of All the Bids Quality of Life Working Group. We install free security cameras, and we're about to start a pilot program with Security Patrol, which is being funded by a city grant for six months. Maybe longer, but we'll see. This is a lot of words. The the key parts are why we should merge. We save staff time. We estimate staff spend about seven hundred twenty-five hours a year doing things a second time because we have the two bids. Economies of scale and also having unified message to bring the bids under one budget, one unified decision-making will make the whole neighborhood work easier. And the bids message get, um, be one consistent message. The proposed merge bid, this is the same map I showed you before, but it's breaking up the community boards. So Community Board fourteen is almost the entire bid is in Community Board fourteen, as well as in the seventieth precinct and the sanitation district, which is the same as the Community Board district. Uh, one block face is in Community Board nine, the seventy-first precinct and sanitation district nine. For services, we were mentioning before sanitation, safety, marketing, holiday lights, economic development and administration. In this merger, we're not reducing, we're not, or removing any of the services. We're increasing them slightly on some of them. And we're also making them more flexible so we can pivot if needed. Like when COVID happened, we obviously couldn't have events, so we need that flexibility so we can take the money that we already have and possibly move it into a different area within these, within these categories. The proposed budget, as I mentioned, will be a combination of the two bids. This is based on the current two budgets. So sanitation is two hundred ten thousand four four eight. Public safety, sixty-seven thousand four sixty-six. Marketing, one oh seven five five oh. Holiday lights, fifty thousand four hundred. Economic development, forty-three eight ninety-five. And administration, one oh nine two forty-one, bringing it to the total of five eighty-nine. And staff time is worked into those areas based on how much time we put to each of them. The name of the new bid would be the Church Flatbush Community Alliance. This was after a series of discussions with the Board with help from the Support Center. We came up with that name to kind of reflect that we're doing more community work while we're still serving those two commercial districts. So I mentioned the assessments. Each each bid property has to pay an amount that's based on a formula based on the total. So it always adds up to the same amount. Most bid members will not see a significant change in their annual assessment. Some will, the much larger ones will, but this is the median and the average that we see now. So Church Avenue, the current one is, the current assessment on a property is twelve sixty-three. The average is two thousand twenty-nine. For Flatbush, the current median is eleven sixty-five and the average is nineteen sixty-nine. And then when it's merged, it's going to, it's going to be shifted a little bit. And the median will be eleven twenty-five with the average at nineteen eighty-nine. And with any bid members, I don't know if there are any bid numbers on the call, but I'd be happy to look later and I could give you an estimate of what it would be. Because we have a chart, which changes from year to year slightly, but it could still give you a pretty good idea. So this is the formula that would be used to create. Sorry about that. Oh, so the formula to assess each property is something that the Flatbush Avenue Bid actually updated just a few years ago. So this is the formula that we thought would be the most current. It incorporates some things that were not incorporated in the older, the older formulas. So each property, sixty percent of their property's assessment will be based on the footage facing Flatbush or Church Avenue, plus forty percent will be based on their entire commercial square footage, with some exemptions that are listed below. So if you have a property that is twenty-five feet wide and one story next to something that's twenty-five feet wide and five stories of commercial footage, the one with five stories is going to pay more, and we figured that would be a good way to kind of balance the properties that have more rentable space than others. As vacant land is also assessed, and the only difference is instead of basing forty percent on commercial square footage, it would be based on lot size because there is no commercial square footage. But once that property is an active rentable property, then it would shift to that first, to formula number one. And the last part is commercial condos, which would be in addition to an individual commercial condo square footage. The frontage for commercial condos within the building will be determined based on the size of the condos. So you have commercial condos. If you know Max Deals next to Bobby's, that's a commercial condo. I believe where Save-A-Thon used to be is also a commercial condo. So it looks the same to to a shopper or to a resident, but it actually is is a little bit different the way it's structured. The only other difference that I mentioned, which is important up here is number C, letter C, is that properties on Church Avenue from East Sixteenth to Coney Island Avenue are only, the bid is only on the commercial side, the north side of the street. So those will get sanitation and public safety at half the level provided the properties where you have both sides of the street. Um, and they pay a lower assessment, which is roughly eighty eighty percent of what they otherwise would pay. This is a continuation of the way the Church Avenue Bid's formula is currently set up. What's next is the merger has been approved by both bids boards, and S. B. S., as you know, has mentioned, has begun the process of walking the proposal through the reviews. We're hopeful that it will be final by mid two thousand twenty-three, which is in time for our fiscal year. So the upcoming public hearings, of course, the first one is right now. And then on Thursday, there's an in-person hearing at Brooklyn Borough Hall, and I think Ena from Brooklyn Borough Hall is on this call. And then Wednesday, Department of City Planning is having a virtual hearing. And that is it. And thank you for listening. I'm gonna pull this open. We can questions. Oops.
Thank you very much for that presentation. We'll begin with questions from Board Members. First member, first Board Member will be Carl Henry Sazhar. Go ahead.
So folks, good evening and Happy New Year, Lauren. Same to you. Thank you for the presentation. I apologize I'm speaking from the beyond because I have some camera issues. And so I'll keep it brief. So first thing, thank you for the presentation, especially the part saying why the the merger was happening, because I read the proposal, I think, from the end of November. And at least when I read it, I don't believe I saw that in the improvement section. Maybe I misread it, so I'm glad to see that part. I have two questions. I'll brief. The first one is, you said the merger is already been approved by the respective bids, and you showed the timeline. My question is, what has been the communication plan for the the hundreds of businesses there? Right? Because that is something that was mentioned in the slide deck and also the proposal itself. So that's my first question to you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the question. We've done email blasts, mailing and and in-person drop-off of a letter that explains everything, as well as some phone calls to some businesses who will be impacted more. The Board of Directors also has has input and has, you know, they're they're relatively large. Some of them are relatively large businesses in the bid, so they've had some interaction as well, and we've also posted on our social media. So that's that's so far, but that process isn't over. We're about to do more outreach on Church Avenue because Church Avenue's annual meeting is coming up, so it's a great opportunity for us to get out again and talk to people about it.
Got you. Thank you for that. Yeah.
I was gonna add, since it's, and someone at S. B. S. actually pointed this out, though, a good way to to explain it to people, but it's a very administrative change. So I think that's why when we have explained it, people are like, oh, okay. It's just some mergers are different and maybe may be more controversial, but this is kind of a solidification of what, or is that a word, of what we're already doing and the way we're already functioning.
Got you. Thank you for that. And then the other question I had to, I'm trying to remember where I had read this in the proposal from like end of November, two thousand twenty-two. But I believe it was the part about services where it had mentioned, I think, when the plan was outlining like security versus marketing and other things. It said something else about like, if something is on the north side of the street, it'll get half the service of the other one or something like this. And so could you just explain what that means? Because when I was reading that, I couldn't understand, you know, what that meant. And then number two, because I couldn't understand what that meant, I couldn't understand, you know, the thinking behind that as well.
Fine, right, right. So on, um, on Church Avenue from, are you familiar with Church Avenue around like East Tenth Street? And
Yes, I am.
Okay, so that that part of, that part of Church Avenue where it's one side are houses and a nice mural. There is the Advantage Care, I think, or the Advantage Health Facility on Coney Island Avenue and Church Avenue, which is not in the bid. But that whole stretch from Coney Island Avenue up to right before Bobby's is only the north side of the street is actually in the bid. So the bid isn't shaped, it's not too full. Block faces is going from Flatbush Avenue to Coney Island Avenue. It kind of goes, if you can see this on Zoom, but it goes wide and then it goes in only half the street. So that part from Bobby's to Andrew's Coffee Shop is only the north side of the street, so we only do sanitation on the north side. It's, and and the bid was, we were basically, we're sticking with the same geographic area that the bids were when they were formed in the nineteen eighties. So it's the same. We're continuing that.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. Those are my questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next question is from Board Member Glenn Wolin.
Thank you. My interest is in staffing. The, what you showed us, a total of five hundred eighty-nine thousand and about a hundred and eight thousand in admin, which I assume has to do with offices as well. And that the staffing was spread out among all the other categories, which doesn't really tell us anything. So I'm wondering, how many staff are there and roughly what is the total of the five eighty-nine that's paying the salaries and benefits for the staff? And finally, is there any advantage to combining the two bids from a staffing perspective? Thank you.
You may have to remind me of one of those questions. I'm going to try to hit all of them. If you had asked me on Friday, we had a staff of two and a half. Now, today we have a staff of four and a half because two new people just joined, who I'm very excited about. So now we're fully staffed. We have four people running both bids. As plus an admin person who's from the neighborhood also, who just helps us with errands and getting stuff organized, unpacking files and everything. I cannot tell you, I do not know off the top of my head the amount that's for admin, so I'm making a note. I will get back to the Board. Sean, I'll I'll look that up. Look at our budget. Okay. And benefits also, and since not everyone gets, we will have to figure it out. I will let, get you that number. Uh, as far as the efficiency of the staff, is that what you were asking? I'm sorry, Glenn.
Well, the advantage, in other words, let's say you had three staff in Church Avenue Bid and three staff in Flatbush Avenue Bid, and now combined, you don't need six, you could function with five, as in a possible example.
Okay, so because we do so much of our our work as one, and we have been for several years now, there's no, with one exception, everyone works for both bids. I work for both bids. All our staff does. The only person who technically works for one bid is our Avenue NYC, which is a grant that we, a great grant that we have from the city. That program manager only works for the Church Avenue Bid. As far as salary, however, the way that proposal was written for that three-year grant, the entire work is for both bids, so it kind of works out, so it benefits both. That I would, I would not want to go down in staff at all. We're doing an awful lot with just a few people. And there's so much more that we could be doing that I would love to actually get into. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Thank you very much, and I wasn't suggesting anything, just feel for, you know, how you function. Thank you.
Thanks, Glenn.
Thank you. And next is Board Member Dwayne Joseph. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Lauren. Good evening. Thank you for your presentation. I'm actually excited about this a little bit. The merger, from an administrative standpoint, I understand is going to make it a lot easier for you to do a lot of the work that bids usually are charged for doing. I am curious, though, you know, with this merger, it makes you the sixth largest bid in Brooklyn from an assessment standpoint. And I'm curious as to, you know, how much of that's going to go into, I mean, you have your budget here. At least the the first-year budget. And you're saying that only forty-three thousand is going into, just over forty-two thousand going into economic development? At any point, do you guys put out a proposal of what you're doing, an annual report or anything like that, that the Board would be privy to? Just because, and 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 I'll be frank, you know, living off the Avenue on on Flatbush Avenue over the years, there've been a lot of complaints that they don't see a lot of stuff coming from the bid. And of course, some of that is true, some of it not. But I mean, definitely from a marketing standpoint, you know, there's a lot that's happening with the comparable bids in the area that have a smaller budget than yours. So I'm wondering, you know, if there's going to be a proposal put out that kind of expresses to the community stakeholders what you're doing for the businesses.
Well, first thing, we we are not as good at marketing ourselves as we should be. I always feel like we're not, we don't talk about a lot of the stuff we do until someone starts asking, and then there's a very long list of things that we're doing. As far as being, just to touch on that, as far as being the sixth, that's interesting because I hadn't done that math, but being the sixth largest.
You'd be the sixth largest bid.
It would become, right, right, with the merger. But but also keep in mind that out of all the bids in the city, we actually fall in the middle. So that's, that's the number that I always look at, since sometimes we're actually comparable in the work we do to some of the Bronx bids and some of the other areas. But there, every year, there is room for us to move money from, move money around between those categories, which is something that the Board works on. That we haven't done a public proposal, I'm not sure if this is where you were getting it, but we haven't done a public proposal to get feedback. But we do, we have done surveys on occasion to try to get more information about what people want to see and, you know, try to engage people on social media also. As far as our budget, the annual report, we do an annual report every year, which I think the most recent one is posted on our website, although it may not be up there yet. And we also have an audit, which is public, which I can also send along to Sean, which is fascinating reading. It's fascinating reading if you like numbers, I think. So we could send those along. Public documents. Well, you're a numbers guy? Oh, you're gonna love this, then. You're gonna be very happy. I will send that, I'll send that to Sean. The most recent audits for both and the annual reports for both. And then if you have more, you know, if you need more information, I'd be happy to to see where we could pull more information for you.
I have one more question, if the if the Chair would allow.
Please just be succinct. It's, we have six minutes until our next meeting, and I've got maybe six more people behind you.
I mean, I can, I I'll ask a question and you can answer it directly to the Board in an email. Is there a possibility for the Community Board, I don't know if we already have a seat, to have an advisory seat on your Board? Is that Sean, if we already have one?
She's on her, she's on both Boards, not advisory. She's non-voting, but she's
Right. Ask and answer. Thank you.
Thank you. And and as you all heard me, if you could just be succinct with your questions, we have five minutes. I'd like to start the meeting on time. Next is from Board Member Mehdi Harris.
Thank you so much, Chair, and thank you so much, Lauren, about the presentation. I appreciate it, and it's great to see that you have dedicated some budget for, you know, sanitation and security and such. I'm wondering if you also have a plan or are open to having some budget for improving the infrastructure for bikes and for pedestrians, especially walking on Church Avenue and on Flatbush. I noticed that there are so many parts in the sidewalk that they, you know, the pavement is, has some misalignments or is not ideal for disabled people. Also, the bike infrastructure, for example, you know, having some bike racks for bike, you know, for bikers to lock their bikes and just use those businesses.
Okay, um, that's not in the current plan, but that's the kind of thing that comes up periodically. We actually did go to the Borough President more than, the former Borough President, now Mayor, about getting the entire street on Flatbush Avenue repaved, and that's something that's our Chairman on Flatbush is really interested in. We did it on Church. Bike racks, we help businesses get them because they have to apply through DOT, and sometimes we can rush that through. But yes, we are very much in favor of both. And also, I'm on the bike, I'm sorry, buses, not bikes. Never mind about what I was about to say. But but so, yes, that that's very much in line with what we would do and what we can do.
Thank you very much. Ms. Guzenfeld from the Borough President's Office, I just wanted to reach out to you because you dropped your hand, and I wanted to make sure that, you know, if you had something you wanted to say, please feel free to.
I just had a quick question. I'm sorry, request to clarify how businesses frontage on both Church and Flatbush are taxed, are assessed according to the formula?
You know, you know, I can send you the the presentation, the ones that are on the corner. There ones on, so if you know Flatbush, the ones on the east side of the street are already in the Flatbush Avenue Bid, so that's, that's going to be the same as it currently is. The ones on the west side of the street is, on one side is the Flatbush Reform Church, which is a church, so it's exempt. And on the other side, it's going to be assessed based on the Flatbush Avenue frontage. That's eight-eight-four Flatbush Avenue, I think.
Thank you, and I'm sorry to take up any time from Board Members.
Oh, of course. Now, thank you so much for being here tonight. Next question is from Board Member Joel Siegel.
Hello, everybody. Happy New Year. I really only, I have two comments. One, I I would like to hear the business owners' responses. I mean, and thank you, by the way, to Lauren for your presentation. I hear that the Boards voted in favor of this, but I would like to hear what the businesses have to say, and if they're in favor, then I would think we should be too. And I would also like to comment, based on my experience in real estate, is that the people that pay these taxes are generally the business owners, the, especially the the storefronts, because their leases more often than not, a vast majority of, contain provisions where they pay all or a percentage of the bid taxes. So that's part of most commercial leases. So when we're talking about paying, it's not the owners generally, it's the, it's the business owners. And so we should all be aware of that.
Can I add one thing, Joanne? I know you're almost out of time. Our outreach, although our mail outreach is to everyone, our in-person outreach tends to be more to businesses because they're the ones who are actually on the street. And some of those, sometimes we do get property owners also for the ones who own and and have businesses. But yeah, outreach is is definitely a little more to businesses, and I, and that is why, besides the practicality.
Thank you very much. Next question will be from Joe Dweck, followed by Nina Sebger. Nina will be the last question.
Thank you, Chairman Person Brown. My question really goes to what Carl and Joel had said, that I was concerned about the notification. It seems that you sent notifications, it sounds, to to folks rather than having meetings to hear what's going on. And evidently from what you said, Lauren, that only some of the major folks you had heard. I think that um, as our board, we should have heard feedback from, uh, from those, uh, those participants rather than beforehand, uh, making a decision which we might not be so well-informed. Thanks, bye.
Thank you. And last question will be from Nina Sebger, a board member.
I thank you for this presentation. Just a, a quick question. Is there a reason why the south side of Church Avenue is not included? Are they part of another bid or? What, what's going on there? Thank you.
Bids can't jump over property. They can't jump over, uh, and that side is residential. Yeah, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, seeing that there's no more questions. What's that? Oh, go ahead, Sean.
Just, just, I did want to reassure the board because I have participated in so many of the bid meetings as a non-voting member, that, that Lauren, you know, has run two boards, and to, to gain sort of the economies of scales and efficiency in this merger, I think, is important to the businesses in those bids, and that she has done her due diligence, and and there's been a lot of conversations with the board members and business owners on, on that block. So it didn't come like at the snap of a finger. It's, it's through a lot of work and conversation and input and consideration that they've arrived to the point where they can move forward with the merger, and I, and I applaud Lauren in her work. And I'm sorry to the board that maybe I haven't communicated bid business as much as I should. Note taken.
Thank you very much, Sean. Okay, seeing that there are no more questions, do I have a motion from the floor regarding a recommendation for the proposed extension of the Flatbush Business Improvement District?
Uh, motion to extend the Flatbush Improvement District.
Second.
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 Thank you. Um, to clarify, I'll say motion to approve. Is that fair?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so we'll go ahead and we'll, we'll vote in the reverse order. I'm looking for those who object to the um, proposed extension, uh, the, reject the recommendation to the proposed extension. If you are, if you're, if you're objecting, please raise your hand so we can go ahead and start counting the votes. Seeing none, is there anyone that wishes to abstain? Seeing none, is there anyone ineligible to vote? Seeing none, Sean, your hand popped up. Okay. Inadvertently, okay. So that being said, uh, the recommendation will be to approve the proposed extension of the Flatbush Business Improvement District unanimously. I will report out on this um, to the full board, which is the meeting that is immediately following this one. And we will close this public hearing at seven oh three. Thank you, everyone, who showed up here tonight. Um, just give me, just give me one minute to get myself collected, and we will start as soon as possible. Okay, I'm back. So just a bit of housekeeping again. If you are not muted, please mute yourself. Um, if you're calling in, great. This is perfect. Thank you so much, everybody. All right. Breakneck speed tonight. This meeting of Brooklyn Community Board fourteen is called to order on Monday, January third, two thousand twenty-three, at seven oh four PM, under the applicable statutes of New York State, the Charter of New York City, the Board's bylaws, and Robert's Rule of Or, Rules of Order. The Board's policy is to encourage detailed public discussion of matters before the Board at our committee meetings and at public hearings. Consequently, except by board members, there will be no public discussion at a regular monthly meeting of matters about which a public hearing or a committee meeting has been held. Specific service delivery requests or complaints should be brought to the attention of the community district staff, I'm sorry, district office staff by calling the Board Office during regular business hours or by visiting our website at any time. Other matters of civic interest may be brought before the Board during our scheduled public comment period, which will begin tonight after all other business on the Board's monthly meeting agenda has been concluded. No partisan political appeals or advertising of for-profit enterprises will be heard. Persons wishing to speak during the public comment period were asked to pre-register. Attendance will be taken from the participant list. And regarding the minutes, the, do we have any changes um, for the minutes via email?
No.
Are there any changes from the floor regarding the minutes of the December two thousand twenty-two meeting? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt the minutes?
Motion.
Seconded.
Thank you. Uh, we'll vote in the reverse order. Is there anyone that objects to adopting the minutes of the December twenty-twenty-two meeting? Seeing none, is there anyone that wishes to abstain? Seeing none, is there anyone ineligible to vote? Thank you. The motion, uh, the minutes of the twenty, December twenty-three, uh, twenty-two meeting have been adopted unanimously. Moving on to the District Manager's Report, District Manager Sean Campbell.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Again, um, happy new year for me too, but I want to back up to December and congratulate the Seventieth Police Precinct on um, such a really nice kid-packed room for their holiday party.
You're welcome.
It was, it was really, I mean, it gets bigger every year, and it was really the, the, the true spirit of Christmas. And since he's here, I'll say I don't think I'll ever tire of Santa Nuzzi. But great, great job for bringing the, the true meaning of Christmas to so many families in the midst of really serious challenges. Job well done. Since our last meeting, I attended the Brooklyn Bus Redesign Meeting. Gail L. Smith also participated in that. But otherwise, it was very poorly attended by community members. And um, because they are such significant changes, I, I encourage people to take part in that. Liz Denise can tell you that there is an opportunity to go on their site and put in suggestions. You can do that. Um, and we will also get out the information about the upcoming bus redesign meetings. Um, and I will try to sort of nudge people along routes where there are going to be um, changes that will be locally impactful. I also attended the Department of Parks and Recreation, UMA Park Community Input Session, which Ed Powell, I'm sure, shares my optimism and enthusiasm for this upgrade for UMA Park, because we have been, you know, asking for this for a really long time. That was, uh, that was much better attended and saw some newer community members on that and hope to see them more often um, at, at upcoming meetings. We are excited that Councilmember Rita Joseph saw the need and value in this investment and look forward to parks coming directly to our Board, to our um, Community Environment, Cultural Affairs, and Economic Development Committee, probably in the spring. So stay tuned for that. Um, it'll be exciting. Then, um, I have some good news, and as per Community Board fourteen's bylaws, Section eleven C, I am pleased to announce that I've offered the community coordinator position to a candidate, Sarah Sklar, um, who's accepted the post, and we're all excited to be, to be working together. We still have to wait for O and B pre-approved the details of that hire. And we have to wait for that to, that part to be processed, and then it goes to Borough Hall. And honestly, we've had some um, slowdowns at Borough Hall, so I'm, I'm hoping that they'll be more expeditious about this one, and that they will then also finally approve the personnel action regarding Patricia Olender's willingness to come onboard four days a week, up from one day a week, um, with a modest salary adjustment to, to uh, because of the extra responsibility that comes along with that. And also, you know, the extra work that I want to say thank you for publicly. It's been a couple of months with just the two of us, and it's been a busy couple of months, and she's really stepped up to the plate in really helpful and important ways. So we will, that part went to Borough Hall on December fifteenth. And so we're, we're hoping that they get that one, and the, the next one approved sort of in, in tandem with one another. But I look forward to introducing Sarah Sklar to, to the Board. And, uh, and hopefully that'll be soon. She's, it was, I want to say one more thing. It, it wasn't a super easy decision. I mean, she certainly did stand out, and I'm excited to work with her. But after some early panic about not getting applications, we ended up getting a, a handful of applications from really smart people who, who would have worked out just fine. And gosh, imagine if community boards had a baseline budget increase and could hire more than one full-time and one part-time staff person, because we could have filled a couple of roles there. So anyway, thank, thank you for listening. And you know where to find us, Monday through Friday. Thanks.
Thank you very much, District Manager Sean Campbell, for all of your um, hard work, being um, one staff member down, and also all that really good, pointed information that you gave us there. Appreciate it. Before I start the Chair's report, I wanted to recognize that Councilmember Farrah Lewis is with us tonight. Councilmember, would you like to address this assembly?
Thank you, Chair. Um, good to see you and everyone this evening. I'll be quick. Um, happy new year. I just wanted to just quickly share with everyone that the City Council held a hearing today regarding the proposed amendment of twelve-one-twenty-six. I've been getting a lot of calls from the community regarding this proposal. A, a decision hasn't been made, but we are currently listening um, on both sides to retirees as well as the administration regarding uh, twelve-one-twenty-six. Um, I'm taking more calls and emails, so if anyone wants to have conversations, I've been speaking directly to retirees about this issue. The speaker also hasn't made a decision about it as well, so I would, I'd wanted to make sure I share that with everyone on here, because I know uh, we have a lot of retirees that participate on this community board. We have two discretionary funding workshops that are coming up. One is tomorrow, virtual, as well as Wednesday, virtual. I could send that information over to you, Chair, and District Manager, Sean Campbell, to share with everyone. And we've also put it up on social media, so if there's any new nonprofits interested in applying for funding, uh, the current discretionary funding for fiscal year twenty-four is currently up. It's live. And we are here to support you through the process so that you know how to apply for it. And that's about it. Thank you for making time for me to speak, and I'll be on for the duration of the meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much and welcome. Um, I just want to recognize the representatives of our elected officials that are here with us tonight. We have Sabrina DeJus from, uh, Councilmember Farrah Lewis's office. Uh, we have Kayla Osborne and Naomi Ritter from Assemblymember Brian Cunningham's office. We have Ellie Slovan from Congresswoman Yvette Clark's office. We have Elaine, uh, Elaine, Eileen Malaney Newman from Borough President Antonio Reynosa's office. We have Lauren Elvers Collins from the Flatbush and Church Avenue bids. Uh, we have President Al, Al Powell from the Seventieth Precinct Community Council. Um, we also have Detective, Detective Scott Nuzzi, Community Affairs from the Seventieth Precinct with us. Thank you for being with us tonight. I'm going to move on to the, if I missed you, or if you're new and you didn't put your designation in the chat in the participant list, just feel free to throw your name in the chat, and I will recognize you. Good evening, Board Members. Happy New Year and happy upcoming Lunar New Year. We'll start with our public hearings. The first was a, a, a public hearing held regarding um, the Flatbush Avenue and Church Avenue bids. The purpose of this hearing was to hear public testimony with respect to an application by the Department of Small Business Services, SBS, pursuant to Section twenty-five, four oh five A of Chapter Four, Title twenty-five of the New York City Administrative Code, to expand and amend to the Flatbush Avenue Business Improvement District in Brooklyn Community Districts nine and fourteen. The recommendation from those board members in attendance of this public hearing was to approve the expansion uh, that came unanimously. Based on this recommendation, do I have a motion from the floor regarding the app, wait. First, was there any questions from board members about this, um, about this uh, expansion? Second. Oh, Mary Kay, I apologize. Mary Kay Siri from Assemblymember Robert Kara's office. Thanks for being here. Sorry about that. Thanks. So seeing Barton had a question. Barton, person, board member, you have a question about the expansion?
It's not so much a question, it's sort of a request, in that I'm not sure we really had quite enough time to maybe get into some of the details that some other people may have wanted to poke into. And I'm just wondering if Lauren would be willing to come to our Echo Dev, you know, committee at some point in the next month or so, just to, you know, offer another opportunity. You don't have to make a full presentation. But if, you know, in the interim, people have, you know, come up with some extra questions, I think it'd be great if you made yourself available, perhaps, just, you know, to, to perhaps address some.
I'd love it. Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks so much. That was it.
Sean, I saw your hand come up on that.
Just, um, just to make sure the board is aware that the, that a recommendation would have to precede that, that presentation because they are on a deadline. I think the expiration date for a letter of recommendation is soon.
I, I, I was not saying that we hold up the vote on the, the recommendation, simply that, you know, afterwards, you know, if people start thinking of other things, I think it'd be great if she just made herself available to answer subsequent questions, but I'm not saying at all to hold up.
Okay, sorry, sorry for my misunderstanding. Yeah.
No, not at all.
Yeah, Laura, I think that they presented fairly recently, but we'll bring her and Kenneth Bono back. Thank you. I just wanted to address a question that the council member put in the chat. She was asking for the coordinates of the expansion, so I just want to go ahead and read what the, um, what the boundaries would be. So it would include properties along Flatbush Avenue from the north side of Cortelia Road to the south side of Parkside Avenue. And then on Church Avenue, from the east side of Coney Island Avenue to the west side of Flatbush Avenue. I believe there is only the um, east corner of Flatbush Avenue on um, the south side of Parkside that will be included in the expansion. So it's just a small area that's combining what was originally part of CB nine into CB fourteen. I hope that answers your question, Councilmember. So again, you're welcome. Getting back to the recommendation, seeing no other additional questions, uh, based on the recommendation, do I have a motion from the floor regarding the application by the Department of Small Business Services to expand and amend the Flatbush Avenue Business Improvement District?
Motion, Florin, to you.
Thank you. Seconded?
Seconded.
Thank you very much. Um, thank you, President Powell. In this voting, we'll capture the objections. Um, are there any board members here that are objecting to to approving the um, expansion of the Flatbush Avenue Business Improvement District? Seeing none, is anyone wish to abstain? Seeing none, is anyone ineligible to vote? Excellent. Um, and so this uh, passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to a recommendation on special permit application, ESA twenty-twenty-two dash ninety-one dash BZ. The property location, fourteen ninety-two East Twenty-Fourth Street. The purpose of this hearing was to hear public testimony with respect to an application to the Boards of Standards and Appeals pursuant to Section seventy-three dash six twenty-two of the zoning resolution. This is calendar number of ESA twenty-twenty-two dash ninety-one dash BZ, and the address is fourteen ninety-two East Twenty-Fourth Street. The recommendation from those board members in attendance was to approve the special permit, and this was by unanimous vote. Any questions from board members regarding this public hearing? Seeing none, based on the recommendation, do I have a motion from the floor regarding the special permit application made to enlarge a single-family residence at fourteen ninety-two East Twenty-Fourth Street?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Who seconded?
Joe Dweck.
Thank you. Uh, I'll vote to capture objections. Are there any board members who object to this special permit application? Seeing none, are there any board members wishing to abstain from this special permit application? Are there any board members who are ineligible to vote? Seeing none, the motion carries and the board recommends to approve the special permit. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to the Borough Board Report. On Tuesday, January third, twenty twenty-three, a Borough Board meeting was held. The first agenda item was a public hearing in the matter of physical improvements proposed in Meadowport Path, Garfield's Path, Children's Corners Path, Estelle's Bridge in the historic landmark Prospect Park. The proposed work is adjacent to Community Districts six, nine, and fourteen. Meadowport Path is a five hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar project funded by a New York State grant. It creates greater ADA accessibility with asphalt paving. New bench pads will be added along with a new Prospect Park bench settee. Garfield Path is a five hundred thousand dollar project supported by Assemblymember Robert Carroll. It creates eighty greater ADA accessibility with an asphalt path and a new steel railing replacing the old wood railing. There will also be addition of new bio swales. The Carousel slash Children's Corners Path is a four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar project funded by participatory budgeting from CD thirty-nine, provides new asphalt paving and bluestone, the replacement of benches and a new accessible water fountain. Lastly, Estelle Bridge is a five hundred thousand dollar project funded by participatory budgeting from Community District Thirty-nine, will replace the cyclone fencing with wood fencing and replacement of the oak bridge surface with new wood boards. The Borough Board voted to recommend these projects. The process will travel to Landmarks Preservation Commission for review. The next item on the agenda was a review and discussion regarding a Borough Board resolution calling on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation amending the Public Officers Law to conform with meeting procedures under the corporate laws of state of New York. The resolution encourages the Public Officers Law be crafted to mirror section seven oh eight C of the Business Corporation Law, section seven oh eight C of the Nonprofit Corporation Law, and section twenty-eight of the Religious Corporation Law, all which provide the ability to meet using electronic means. During the discussions, the suggestions were made, including my suggestion that the resolution may have room to be strengthened to include the ability to conduct business and ratify voting items when meeting electronically. During new business, I raised concerns regarding the Borough Hall Human Resource Policy outlined in a memo last summer and Personnel Action Requests, otherwise known as PARs. In July of twenty twenty-two, twelve of the eighteen Community Board Chairs signed a letter to Borough Hall asking their General Counsel to consult with the City Law Department regarding Community Board autonomy as a city agency and overreach from other city agencies, including Borough Hall and OMB, the Office of Management and Budget. General Counsel to the Borough President Gregory Lewis submitted a supportive letter to City Hall, City Law Department in July and followed up again on December fifth. City Law Department replied that they are still crafting a response to the General Counsel's letter. That was the end of business for the meeting that took place on the third. There was a special meeting of the Borough Board on January fifth. This was convened to review and discuss the proposed rules change. The proposed new rules aim to, one, codify the norms, procedures, and standards according to and by and under which the Brooklyn Borough President appoints members to the Brooklyn Community Boards as provided in section twenty-eight hundred A of the Charter. And two, explain, elaborate, and solidify the Brooklyn Borough President's duty under section eighty-two twelve of the New York City Charter to provide training, technical assistance to the members of community boards within the Borough of Brooklyn. The Charter remains vague with regards to training and assistance to community boards. In the proposed rule change, training and technical support is clarified to mean ministerial administrative support. The rule change supports community board autonomy as a city agency. I forecast that we will likely need to update our bylaws with the purpose of clarifying internal procedures as they relate to the rule change, if and when passed. So next steps are for Borough Board members to review the rule change, submit recommendations for changes. Once the draft is finalized, the rules go to City Law Department and the Mayor's Office of Operations for sign off. Then within thirty days, a public hearing will be convened. After a public hearing, the final draft will be returned to City Law Department and the Mayor's Office of Operations. I want to note that this adopted rule change will expire when the term of the Borough President ends. So that means the rule change will not live in perpetuity. It will only help to guide the current Borough President and his activities. Okay, that was a lot. Are there any questions from board members? Board Member Carl Henry Sazar, go ahead.
Yes, Chairwoman Brown, thank you for that very thorough recap. And so I guess my first question is, did, you know, did the Brooklyn Borough President's office specify their thinking behind it? Is it just that they want more clarity? Because I'm interested why, if they want more clarity, what is their objective of proposing, you know, a legislative change that would only exist as long as the administrations, you know, in that seat?
Thank you. So if we're talking about the rule change. Oh, so there are some activities that community boards currently don't do themselves, specifically payment of invoices that's done through Borough Hall. So what I and also, the language is vague with regards to what training and support really means. So this document talks about how community boards are supposed to request assistance and how we're supposed to, you know, basically get our bills paid and our other things paid through Borough Hall. So I think what they're trying to do is limit liability by making sure that each community board has everything that they need in place internally, i.e. bylaws, to function without imposing any liability on Borough Hall when Borough Hall has to offer assistance. And but when I mean offer assistance, you know, paying invoices, helping with us financially with the things that because we don't have a centralized HR system for community boards. We don't have a centralized payment system. All of those things go through Borough Hall to get done currently. So that's, I believe it's really just about making sure that because bylaws vary from board to board, ours happen to be pretty thorough, with some other boards might not be as thorough. So in terms of, for example, hiring staff outside of the district manager, we're very clear in our bylaws to say that the district manager may go ahead and pursue candidates and make hiring so long as it's reported out to the board. It's not the case in other community boards. So does that give you a clearer picture of why this is being done?
It does, yes, because basically it sounds like it sounds like it's a, from their vantage point, it's about better identifying the process. And then from there, each community board can figure out where it needs to make its process improvement. So that's helpful because at first I was thinking, oh, is this a legislative policy change? But it sounds like it may be more of like laying out the process for everyone and then everyone can figure out where they need to plug their gaps. So, all right, thank you. I'm good.
But it does, it just goes beyond best practices. So it's not just a document about best practices. They're proposing to make a rule change. So we're still looking for clarification as to where this rule change is going to sit. I don't, I don't have. Right. So it goes beyond best practices. It is, it is a rule change. Moving on to the next question from Joe Dweck. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman Brown. Everything you said is terrific. I have one question which probably you cannot answer, and that was, you mentioned that Assemblyman Robert had given five hundred thousand dollars approximately for an ADA issue for one of the streets, for one of the roads inside Prospect Park. I thought it was strange because there is no access for people with ADA to the park because there's no vehicular traffic allowed. So I thought that was strange. I wanted to raise that issue. Thank you.
So the Garfield Path is currently, it's a path. It's currently a dirt path. So it literally has zero ADA accessibility. And it does go up to the street to, was it Garfield Street on Park Slope Side? So by making an asphalt path, it becomes there is greater ADA accessibility. Somebody has an echo on. Just everybody check your mute, please. I see one person who has it off. So, yeah, so the Garfield Path currently is a down slope. It's dirt. It will be paved and they will be putting in a new steel railing which will aid in getting down the path and up the path for safety.
Thanks, Joanne. You're amazing.
Oh, thank you. And I see the hand from Sean Campbell.
Thanks. Two things. One, I think it's okay to not be totally clear on this proposal yet. It's sort of early in the process and there's a lot still to be teased out. And then I just wanted to add for clarification, Joanne, you mentioned Borough Hall having to approve expenditures, but that's only for, that's typically only for boards that don't have enough staff members to do it inside. So the system is called FMS and it has to have three approvers. So while we've had only two staffers, we've had to lean on Borough Hall to make those purchasing approvals for us. So I guess we would have to ask for that help if we ever find ourselves again in this position. But it's all the more incentive for them to approve everything quickly, right? So I just wanted to add that note on that particular point.
Thank you for clarifying, but it, you know, it's really forefront of my mind because that's the situation that we're in. And I think there are some other boards that still actually have to get their third signature through Borough Hall. That's not typically the case for Community Board fourteen when we're fully staffed.
Yeah, and it hasn't been easy in the meantime.
Right, they want to find a way to make it easier. But so, all right, so that ends the Borough Board Report. I'm going to move on to the appointment of the nominating committee. The twenty twenty-three nominating committee has been appointed for Region One. We have Melissa Minnick for Region Two. We have Corazon Valiente for Region Three. We have Donald Loggins for Region Four. We have Abe Tref and the at-large member will be Naomi Lipnick. Thank you to these board members who agreed to serve on this committee. The nominating committee will be scheduled in order to form a slate that can be reported out to the full board at February's general meeting. Nominations from the floor, if any, can be made at that general meeting and elections will be at the March general meeting. And this ends the chair's report. I see a hand from District Manager Sean Campbell.
I think you wanted to leave an opportunity for any board members to ask any questions on the nominating committee in the process?
Yes. Do any board members have any questions regarding this nominating committee?
Can you just repeat it? I missed it.
Oh, sorry. What, repeat the nominating committee frame?
Yes, please. Yes, thank you.
Melissa Minnick, Corazon Valiente, Donald Loggins, Abe Tref, Naomi Lipnick.
Thank you.
I see Florencia Chang, Jita has her hand up?
Yes, thank you. I do not have a question at this time, but I would like to make a motion to invoke CB fourteen's bylaws, section four A, two dash two, or number two, which to allow the chair to be nominated to run a third term.
I second that proposal. Joe Dweck.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Florencia and Joe. So with a motion seconded, I'll go ahead. Is there any discussion from board members about this item? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and ask for a vote. We'll start with objections. Are there any board members in attendance who object to invoking? Seeing none, are there any board members that wish to abstain? Are there any board members that are ineligible to vote?
Probably you.
Oh, yes, I am. Sorry. Yes, I'm ineligible. Thanks. Thanks, Sean. Just trying to move it along. All right, well, thank you. Thanks for the Ps and Qs. And I want to, and I want to thank you, Florencia and Joe, for that. All right, so that really ends the chair's report. Thanks, everybody.
Joanne, you're doing unbelievable job. God bless you. You're so competent and so caring. You're just a steady, steady hand. God bless you.
Oh, thank you very much. Thank you to all the support from all the board members. Thanks, everybody. You're getting all these things. Thank you. All right. I'm having a hot flash. Moving on to topical committees, reporting items. The first committee to report will be Housing and Land Use Committee.
Okay, thank you, Chair Brown. Greg Alvarez, co-chair of the Housing and Land Use Committee. On December fifteenth, we held our last meeting where we had a pretty likely affair in terms of presentations. So I'll take the first half and then my co-chair, Talisha St. Bill, will take the rest. So first off, the meeting started with a presentation from Tyrone McDonald, the Community Relations Director of Neighborhood Housing Services, NHS of Brooklyn, wherein he described the various services that they provide to the community. They relate to very valuable services for tenants, for homeowners, and for landlords. And so it's a, it's a pretty wide ranging menu in that they offered and he laid those out for us during the meeting. They present webinars and they service thousands of requests a year on various subjects for those, for those respective, respective groups. As part of that, we also heard from Byron Todman, who is a program manager in NHS, who described a recent initiative at NHS for property management services. They offer their services to landlords of one to four unit properties and they basically serve the function of property managers to help aid those, to help aid those properties, particularly for landlords who are new to the game and those who need assistance. So he offered and outlined that program as well. So we, for any other further details, obviously you can go back to the meeting if you were not able to attend, but we had some other speakers. So I'll turn it over to Talisha now to round out the program.
Hi, thank you, Greg. So for the second half of the December fifteenth Housing and Land Use Committee meeting, we had Lucy Block, who is the Senior Research and Data Associate for the Association for Neighborhood and Housing Development. And Lucy's walked us through the DAP, which stands for the Displacement Alert Project Portal. A lot of mouthfuls here. And that DAP portal is where tenants and homeowners and I guess registered public can have access to finding out what's happening in buildings. And this is an especially helpful tool for people at risk or currently undergoing displacement. And it's not just limited to housing. So some of the things that the DAP portal currently contains are access to property ownership information. ownership information, rent stabilization, subsidy information, court and legal information, research for high-risk buildings. And you can check out Lucy's presentation on the YouTube page, the CB14 YouTube page. And the last, but not least presenter was Morgan Ruther, who is a student at the Columbia University Graduate School of Architecture, Planning, and Preservation. I told you, there was a lot of mouthfuls in titles. But she also happens to be our CB14 Winter 2023 fellow, and we're super lucky to have her with us. And Morgan presented the Mayor Adams City of Yes Initiative as it pertains to zoning, sustainability, and affordable housing. And some highlights of Morgan's presentation were a word discussion on carbon neutrality, the Zero Carbon Initiative, which will be a major focus for Morgan and CB14 in the coming months. So please stay tuned. Morgan did create a proposed timeline for kicking things off, which included asking those who were present for questions in terms of, questions that you might have as they pertain to the City of Yes proposals, and so that we can speak with, and really Morgan, can speak with the DCP liaison for CB14. And that meeting can happen sometime soon. So if you do have questions, please feel free to send them to District Manager Campbell and let us know. Some of the major topics, just to give you a quick summary, for zoning for zero carbon include energy, which includes solar use, buildings, which entails new zoning rules for buildings, transportation, which includes electric vehicle charging, which I think that that was a bit of a hot topic at the meeting, and waste and water, which entails permeable ground cover, amongst other things. So again, I encourage you to go to the CB14 YouTube page and look up the December 15, 2022 Housing and Land Use Committee meeting, because it had some good information. And if you have any questions that you want to have submitted and have highlighted and answered in upcoming City of Yes meetings, then please email District Manager Campbell. You know where to email her. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for that report. Just a quick shout out to representatives of our elected officials. We have Judith Dustin here from DA Eric Gonzalez's office. We have Anastasia Yaskova from the Mayor's Office of Community Affairs, Brooklyn. We have Pinkus Hyken from Comptroller Brad Landriss' office here. And another shout out to Mary Kay Siri, because I missed her before. Moving on to the next committee, Transportation Committee, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Happy New Year, everyone. Before I begin the discussion of our committee meeting from last week, I just wanted to echo and note that Transportation Committee member Liz Denny's put in the chat earlier, there's a Brooklyn Bus Redesign Public Workshop for our community district on Thursday, February 23 via Zoom at 6:30 PM. Liz posted a link for that earlier in the chat, so you can find that there. In terms of our committee meeting on January 5th, there were two presentations. I'll briefly summarize the first one before handing off to my co-chair Ed Sen. So the first presentation was by DOT regarding Flatbush Avenue bus priority. MTA was also in attendance and answered some questions. So DOT has been getting feedback that buses move slowly along Flatbush Avenue. B41 Limited, they said, generally travels only between 5 and 7 miles per hour in our community district between weekdays. There are about 120,000 average daily bus riders on Flatbush Avenue, with B41 being the primary bus route. Additionally, they noted that 164 people have been killed or seriously injured on Flatbush Avenue over the last five years. There are five tools in DOT's bus priority toolkit to improve bus speeds, and that, those include an offset bus lane, a center bus lane, a busway, curbside bus lane, and a queue jump signal. DOT is basically still in the early stages here. They're currently at the feedback gathering and analysis stage, and there are many steps to go before DOT rolls anything out, including design development and additional feedback gathering and analysis. So we'll certainly be hearing more about this in the coming months and years. Many folks, including board members, had questions for DOT or comments for DOT, including those by Sabrina DeJuse from Farrell Lewis's office, who expressed the desire for the council members' office to sit down with DOT further. I encourage Community Board members and members of the public who are interested in the discussion to watch the video of the meeting on YouTube, as there were a lot of good questions and helpful answers. So I'll hand it over to Ed to summarize the latter portion of the meeting.
All right. Thanks, Steve. Good evening, everyone. So the latter portion of the meeting consisted of a presentation by Dustin Koo, a senior project manager from DOT, who presented to the Transportation Committee an overview of the Southern Brooklyn crosstown B82 Select Bus Service capital project. So DOT previously presented to CB14's Transportation Committee in May of 2017 with a draft plan, and again in March 2018 with a design update, and the B82 SBS subsequently launched in October of 2018. And for this presentation, DOT shared capital improvements that would take place on Kings Highway between Ocean Avenue to Nostrand Avenue, focusing on plans to improve the conditions of service roads and medians, to include reconstructing other existing medians and adding landscaping, also focusing on narrow bus stops that aren't ADA accessible. And this would include 10 median bus stops to widen ADA accessible platforms, and also focusing on long unprotected pedestrian crossings. And this project would include 10 curb extensions, 14 pedestrian islands, and the reconstruction of the Kings Highway roadway to improve grading and drainage, and also resurfacing the roadway with fresh asphalt and markings. So for additional details on this capital project, to echo what Steve said, please watch our Transportation Committee meeting. I'm sure DOT will also share the PowerPoint presentation, and we'll make that available on the website as well. So with regards to DOT's landscaping goals within this capital project, they are proposing, the purpose is to really improve safety, rainfall drainage, and beautifying the medians with trees and greenery. So DOT is requesting a letter of support from CB14 for their landscaping plans for the aforementioned sections of Kings Highway. And the Transportation Committee came to a unanimous consensus to recommend to the board that CB14 support DOT's landscaping plans. And that's about it from me.
Thanks. It looks like Transportation Committee has a question from Board Member Mehdi Harris.
Thank you so much, Chair. I have a process question, and sorry if it is, you know, I'm new to the, I'm asking, is this going to be a ULR process?
Are you referring to which project are you referring to?
Sorry, yeah, Flatbush Bus Route. Yeah, that's my head.
No.
No.
So it is not a ULR process?
It is not.
And do we know why? Because, you know, that's just my question, because I was reading the book, the ULR book, and it sounds like any major project should be a ULR process?
Mehdi, I don't know the answer to that question. I can follow up with DOT and DCP and find out why it isn't. The Church Avenue bus wasn't, the Nostrand SBS was not. So I'm not sure why the DOT projects don't go through ULRP, but I will get the explanation to the board.
Thanks so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much to the Transportation Committee for your report. Moving on to Youth, Services, Education, and Library, please.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I didn't get my hand up in time. But I thought there was a request on the table. I'm not sure if Ed Sen is asking the board for approval.
Yes, I am. Yeah, the Transportation, we came to a unanimous consent to recommend to the board that CB14 support DOT's landscaping plans. I believe Shawn has shared a draft of this letter to the board.
Yeah, that went out with a reminder on Friday. And just in case people didn't take a close look at it, it is, it is narrow in its description. It acknowledges the extent to which the Kings Highway plan is only on the northern part of Kings Highway from Nostrand to East 23rd Street. And the, the request was for support for the landscaping, not for the entire project. I don't know if there's something else the co-chairs want to add to that.
Nothing to add on my end, Steve?
No, nothing. I do see Corazon has his hand up. I wasn't sure if he has a question.
Yeah, when I was reading the draft letter, the question that came to mind is, I just wanted to find out if there's a big difference between using CD14 and CB14, because I noticed that you had used it in the letter, and I didn't know why that was.
Community District 14 is the land, the space that are within the borders, whereas Community Board 14, I think of as more often just being the board members, the body of people that represent the community. So that's when I'm talking about the actual, you know, space. District CD is what gets used more often.
Thank you.
Are the co-chairs ready for me to go through the motions, literally? Okay?
I see Mary Kay Siri has her hand up.
Yeah, that was from much earlier. Thank you very much. All right. So the recommendation from the Transportation Committee was to send this letter of support, which you all received and read. So is there a motion from board members to approve the letter and send the letter of support?
There's no approvals with any.
And is that seconded?
Seconded.
All right. That being said, is, we'll vote in the, by objection, is any board member object to sending the letter of support? Is any board member wish to abstain from voting? And is there anyone who is ineligible to vote? Okay. The letter of support passes unanimously. Anything else that the co-chairs wanted to add? Okay. Thank you very much for your hard work. Moving on to the next committee, Youth, Services, Education, and Libraries.
Thank you, Chairwoman Brown. So folks, good evening again. And so there's three brief updates. So the first one is just a reminder that the Al Schanker UFT Scholarship for eligible high school seniors, the deadline to apply for that scholarship is February 28, 2023. And so if you know of any high school seniors in New York City who are thinking of, you know, applying to college, then I would, you know, suggest that you let this individual know to Google Al Schanker. You spell that A-L, and then the last name is S-H-A-N-K-E-R, UFT Scholarship. And then that should take you to the page where, you know, that student would be able to look at the requirements and see if they are eligible for that. The second update I want to give is, there's an organization called Empower that reached out to the CB14 office towards the end of 2022. And so basically, this organization says that it's a national nonprofit that provides tech training and career development. And usually, the group that they focus on are military veterans, their spouses, and also young adults from underserved communities. And so this person did reach out to the CB14 office, asking, you know, basically for an initial introduction. And so just giving folks the heads up about that, I believe this individual may have shared a link with our office as well, too. So putting that out there. And then the last piece is just the friendly reminder that this Thursday at 6:30 PM, we have our planning meeting for the 60th Annual, you know, Youth Conference. And so those are my, those are my updates, folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Human Services Committee.
Hi, good evening. Joel Siegel. I think Nina's here with us as well. Thank you. We have two, we have two items to announce. We have a meeting coming up, a committee meeting coming up on January the 19th. Did you want to say something, Nina? And we're going to get a presentation on health services and programs from the Morris Heis Health Center located at 1095 Flatbush Avenue. And we're going to get a report on the status of the COVID-19 virus vaccine resources and other preventative measures from New York City Health and Hospitals Corporation's Test and Treatment Corps. And we're also going to be discussing the not-for-profit, nonprofit roundtable planning, and, which is the second item, which is February 9th, is the date scheduled for the nonprofit roundtable. Perhaps Nina and Shawn could tell us more about it, but Shawn is sending out this week an announcement for board members to participate in the nonprofit roundtable, to make it a more vibrant event, to mingle with the, and encourage dialogue among the various organizations. So Nina, do you want to add to that at all?
I'd just like to say I was at the roundtable last year, and it was very, very informative. I think the structure that we're proposing for this year will be very interesting and much more dynamic, because we're going to assist groups that have like kinds of goals and purposes to get together and meet with each other, in addition to just giving everybody a general rundown about what kinds of services they provide. And I think that's, that's a very interesting kind of a new way of offering this roundtable. And I hope I'll be able to be there. So that's, that's really it. I think the other presentations that we have, I really hope that everyone will attend just on January 19, because it will be good for everyone to be up to date on health services that are being offered in the community, as well as whatever there is that's new regarding COVID. And it's not going away. So we need to keep on top of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that report. Moving on to community safety.
Good evening, everyone. We do not have a report at this time. We didn't have a meeting. However, we should have a meeting in March. So in the meantime, you can always go to YouTube to check out our community safety meeting from November 22nd, because there's some safety tips there. That is necessary for the winter. Be safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Joe Dweck, did you have a question for one of? Thank you very much. Joe Twack, did you have a question for one of the two committees that just presented?
Yeah, the Public, Community Safety, I just wanted to thank the 700 precinct. We had a child molester, a bad thing from Friday. And the 700, in conjunction with Shomrim and the 66, apprehended the individual today. He's a three-time offender. And thank you so much for keeping this guy, getting this guy off the street. And we're enormously grateful. Thank you, Scott. Please give our love.
Those are all me. I take all the credit.
Thank you very much for that announcement. And thank you Detective Nuzzi. Moving on to Community, Environment, Cultural Affairs, and Economic Development.
Good evening again, all. Dwayne Joseph, Co-Chair of the Community, Environment, and Cultural Affairs and Development, Economic Development Committee for CB14. We've got to find an acronym for that. I'm here tonight along with my co-chair, Barden Crasan. We don't have anything to report out to the board. We didn't have a meeting. Our last meeting was before the last board meeting in December, so we reported there. However, we are working with the district manager to try and schedule something possibly in February, or again, a little later in February. And as Barden mentioned tonight, we are going to invite Lauren Collins to just join us at that meeting to, in case there are extended questions. So we'll let you know, Lauren, when the date is and if you're available. We'd love it if you can join. We're also discussing as committee members topics that we're going to present to the district manager and the chair for possible agenda items. So, you know, we're keeping our fingers crossed that some of those happen. Barden, do you have anything to add? All right. Other than that, Happy New Year to all.
You covered it all so eloquently.
Thank you both. This concludes our topical committees. Moving on to our ad hoc committees, the first one is the Community Board 14 Flatbush African Burial Ground Task Force.
Do you want to take this one, Felicia? I think folks are probably tired of hearing my voice tonight.
No, I think you can take it, Dwayne.
We do not have, our task force last met in, I believe it was October, where we went over the timeline for transfer of, transfer of planning for RFPs, that sort of thing, for the action around the African, the Flatbush African Burial Ground. If I am, if memory serves me correctly, and Sean, you can let us know if you heard anything. At this stage, it was supposed to be a transfer, administrative transfer of responsibility from HPD to Parks. Hopefully that has happened. If you don't have an update right now, Sean, you know, maybe we can try and find out. We can report out to the community that hopefully that has been done.
I'll get the update for sure.
Thank you so much. Other than that, we do not have additional updates.
Thank you very much. And the second ad hoc committee, IE Working Group, is the Street Co-Naming Working Group. This working group will be meeting on Tuesday, January 31 via WebEx. And I'll be facilitating that meeting. And this concludes ad hocs, ad hoc committees. Moving on to our public session. This brings us to our public comment period. Board members are expected to remain for the public comment period. Because we are meeting remotely, all speakers were asked to pre-register via email to the board office. Any member of the public who is not able to register in time can follow up directly with the board and staff, who will include appropriate announcements on the CB14 website. Matters of civic interest and announcements of public events are invited. No partisan political appeals or advertising of for-profit enterprises are permitted. Service delivery requests should be brought to the attention of the staff by email or during regular business hours. Every speaker will be permitted to speak for up to three minutes and may not receive additional time from another speaker. The board has an obligation to conduct its business in an orderly manner. Any person preventing the meeting from continuing will be muted and possibly disconnected from the meeting. The intent of the public comment period is to permit the board and the community a chance to hear diverse perspectives on public issues. Accordingly, we ask that groups be represented by a single speaker. It is now 8:05. Sean, will I be announcing the registered speakers or you this evening?
I've got it handy.
Excellent, thank you. Sean Campbell, District Manager, will be announcing our previously registered speakers at this time.
They are, beginning with Paul Marianofsky and Marion Nakla from Dynamic Youth Community, to be followed by Emily Chingay from Open Plans. Paul and Marina, are you, are one of you still with us?
You come back.
Yeah. Emily Chingay from Open Plans. Emily, are you here?
Hi.
Did I say your last name right?
Emily Chingay, yes, perfect. Hi, everybody. My name is Emily and I do citywide advocacy for Open Plans. We're a nonprofit here in the city advocating for safe and joyful public spaces in all neighborhoods. And we recently started organizing in October of last year and have been looking to connect with local groups throughout the city and learn more about what's going on in their community and if there's anything that we can do to support them in the public realm. So I'd love to learn more about Community Board 14 and if there's anything folks want to meet and talk about, I'd love to do so. But in addition to our work with community groups, we have a campaign that focuses on community boards and encouraging folks to be more involved in their neighborhood. So we have some model resolutions on our website that board members can use for inspiration or if they want to present and vote on them. So you can find them at openplans.org. And you can also email me at emily@openplans.org if you have any questions or if you would like to use them. But yeah, I also really quickly wanted to shout out our Community Board info session that we'll be hosting next week. It's going to be part one of a three-part series on community boards and helpful tips for prospective applicants. So that will be Tuesday and Wednesday of next week. And you can find more info on our events page. And if you're interested, or if you're interested or if you know anybody that is, but yeah, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to throw back to something like 2015, when Open Plans helped us develop our first ever nonprofit organization map, which was one of our kickoff projects for the nonprofit roundtable. So you're definitely part of our history and I look forward to circling back to you. Alexis Spiegel from the Flatbush Theater Group is also here still, yes? Sorry, I minimized my screen and I can't see too many things at once. Alexis?
Hi, I'm here, yes. Hi. So I'm here from Flatbush Community Theater. I did hear that for-profit organizations should not be using this time to really announce themselves while we're moving in the direction of becoming nonprofit ourselves. So I think I'll just say that I'm glad to be here. We're glad to be here. We're glad to be on Church Avenue. And the way that we're incorporated now is a sole proprietorship. We do have a mission to operate on a model of equity and accessibility. So, and we, our flagship program is Flatbush Theater Project, which is a program where we were trying to operate on that model, offer an experience, a theatrical experience that culminates in performance to different youth. So don't hesitate, anyone interested in learning more about us, to reach out. And I'll just say that.
Great, the next registered speaker is Sabrina DeJusst from the Councilmember's Office. Did you still want to say something, Sabrina? I know that Councilmember Lewis was with us a little earlier. Okay, she may have dropped off. So Madam Chair, if it's all right with you, we have, Nerendachala, okay, Nerendachala from the Brooklyn Public Library.
Yes, hello. My name is Nerendachala. I'm from the Flatbush Library. I'm the new branch manager there. I've been there about three months. So I just wanted to share some information real quick. So nearly 30% of Brooklyn nights lack a, lack a home broadband connection. In some neighborhoods, this jumps to 50%. So to address this digital divide, the FCC provides qualifying customers a $30 credit to their internet or cellphone bill. There are many ways to qualify, but those receiving SNAP, Medicaid, veterans benefits, or other services may qualify. And they table an event on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And the next one is Thursday from 3:00 to 7:00, where they'll be setting up a table. They'll help them, you know, help them with the, with the process. So, yeah, so, yeah, for those who qualify though. But we have digital navigators tabling at this branch. We can also host programs, outreach programs, if you need to. Also, some good news, the Books Unbanned Team at BPL have been honored as Librarians of the Year by the National Library Journal. Book Unbanned fights censorship across the country. Also, we have the Culture Pass. So the Culture Pass, they can go on the website, www.culturepass.nyc. And with that, more than 15 performing arts venues offer free tickets via Culture Pass. It's not just museums, but there are 75 theaters and museums in all five boroughs of New York City. And they can make reservations on the Culture Pass website. And again, that website is And as far as the Flatbush branch, our programs. So aside from the Affordable Connectivity Program that I just spoke about, we have the Laptop and Hotspot Loan Program from 4:00 to 6:00 on Tuesdays and Thursdays, where we can sign people up for a brand-new Chromebook and a hotspot. All they need is a library card. Their ID must match the address on the library card. But we'll, we'll, you know, they can come to the customer service desk and we'll, we'll do that for them. Also, we have Chess Workshop for all ages on Tuesdays, 5:00 to 6:00, and Kids Tech Time, 4:00 to 5:00 on Tuesdays also. And once a month, we have an Adult Craft Circle on Tuesdays as well. On Mondays, we have Kids Create, 4:00 to 5:00. On Wednesdays, we have Story Play from 11:00 to 11:45. We also have a Manual Languages Program on Wednesdays, 3:00 to 4:30, which helps people with English language or learning French, Spanish, whatever their interest in languages are. I'd say there are many languages in that database. And if they want to, they can also, with their library card, log in from home and access these databases. They're all free of charge, by the way. And we also have a drop-in resume help from 4:00 to 5:00 on Wednesdays. Also, Thursdays, we have an Ask a Tech Program, 3:00 to 4:00, which will be a program helping them navigate the self-checkout, adding money, printing, you know, any email, any kind of technical questions. They can, we'll have a table set up on the lobbies with a sign that says Ask a Tech, and we'll help them with any technological issues they may have. And also, again, Fridays, we again have Story Play, 11:00 to 11:40, 11:45. I forgot to mention, Thursdays, we also have Team Gaming Club, 3:30 to 5:30. And Fridays, like I said, Story Play, 11:00 to 11:45. We also have the Team Study and Chill Space from 2:30 to 4:30 on Fridays. That's all I had to share. So I'm sorry, it was a lot, but I wanted to, in the, in the, you know, I didn't want to take up all the time.
Thank you very, thank you very much. The next, the last speaker for this evening is Ellie Slavin from Congresswoman Hubert Clark's office.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome back. Good to see everybody again. Hopefully, hopefully everyone had a happy holiday and good summer. We're going into 118th Congress. A lot is happening. There's a Republican Congress, a Democratic Senate. Hopefully, things can work out for everybody, for all, for our sake. Congresswoman now is in DC, sends her best. I posted my contact information on the chat. Our office deals a lot in federal issues. Of course, we give our support letters for local, for Assembly, state, and city. So please, anybody with immigration issues, passport issues, we are open, open for business. And we've been very, very busy with that. And again, I did put my chat, my contact numbers on the chat. My, my personal cell number is, and I'm always available, 24/6 actually, on the Sabbath. I don't answer my phone. But I can tell you that I've answered my phone, middle of the night and early morning. So it's 202-821-7906. It's 202-821-7906. I wish you all a good night.
Thank you very much. And thank you very, very much, Sean, for going through our pre-registered speakers. And thank you to everyone who registered. It's getting about that time to adjourn. I just want to remind everybody that, and especially members of the public that are here, applications for community boards are open. I encourage members that, public members that are with us here today to apply. The application closes on February 14. And for current board members, if it is your cycle to apply, just a reminder to get your application in and leave a lot of time to do it. There are a few, there's a couple, there's a bio and an essay that needs to be filled out, so be mindful. And that's it. District Manager Campbell, you have anything else you need to add before I adjourn? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Excellent. Thank you, everyone, to have a good night. This meeting is adjourned at 17 PM.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Everyone, have a good night.
Good night, everyone. Be well. Happy New Year.
Good night, everyone. Happy New Year.
Good night.